And welcome to the Milford Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, October fifteenth, two thousand and twelve. Before we get started with tonight's meeting, I'd like to take a brief moment to recognize someone who gave so much to the community during his life and who has since passed away. And that was Dominic DeLisandro, former selectman, member of the Finance Committee, and longtime town meeting member, and lover of the community of Milford. He gave tirelessly of his self for this town, and he will be seriously missed. So before we start the meeting, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence in memory of Dominic. And now, as I'm sure Dominic would want, we're going to get down to business. The first item that we have is the signing of the warrant.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. We have meeting minutes for September twenty-fourth, two thousand and twelve.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That, too, is unanimous. The next item that we have on the agenda is citizen participation. Is there anyone in this room that would like to address the board? Not scheduled? Going once? Going twice? Okay. We have public hearings, and the first one that we have this evening is with Ninety-Nine West LLC. This is an application for a stock transfer. And let me just see what information we have. We have correspondence from the A-B-C-C indicating that this is a request from Ninety-Nine West, Inc., for new officer and director in a number of cities and towns, including Milford. And the commission received this information. Review was determined whether the contemplated transaction is consistent with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, which the A-B-C-C is satisfied that it, in fact, is. All application fees have been paid directly to the commission. We have notice of a public hearing that Ninety-Nine West LLC, DBA Ninety-Nine Restaurant and Pub, One Ninety-Six B, East Main Street in Milford, seeks to transfer the license, transfer stock, and name new directors and offices. The premises consists of a five-thousand-square-foot rectangular building with a main entrance in front and emergency exits on each side and rear. We have correspondence from the Damascus Law Office explaining the transaction and providing us further documentation. We also have our town informational form indicating that there's no change of actual use, and no department has any objections or concerns. So with that, we have a representative from the Ninety-Nine here, and I'll just turn it over to you and ask if there's anything that you need to fill in.
No. Basically, I'm Jim Hooley. I'm the general manager at the Ninety-Nine. I've been there about ten years, and it is, nothing's changing, really. It's still, we're going to be doing business as usual, and serving food, safe food, serving alcohol responsibly, and nothing's changed. The senior officers of our present, of our company are staying the same out of Woburn. The parent company has changed to, from O'Charley's, Inc., to the Fidelity National, but other than that, nothing has changed, and I believe it's pretty much going to be the same, business as usual.
Great. Let me turn it over to the board. Dean?
Yeah, no questions. Just continue the good job.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, no, it's just to echo the comments that Dean just made, it's not enough, we don't often have the opportunity to talk to the manager of a premises that operates responsibly. Typically, the folks that we meet with are, you know, otherwise not in compliance, so we appreciate the work that you're doing, and the work that you're doing with the police chief specifically, and keeping order. And so I don't have any questions related to this, but I didn't want to miss that opportunity, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. This being a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that has any question or comment about this application? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, Mrs. Chairman.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Good luck. Thank you. Keep up the good work.
All right.
Thank you very much. Great place. Okay. The next appointment that we have is with the Finance Committee and the Capital Improvement Committee. So if I could ask representatives from both committees to come on down. And the board wanted to schedule this to get a little bit more information on the upcoming articles that are being put forth at the special town meeting. One sponsored by the Finance Committee and this board, and then another by the Capital Improvement. So we have Mark Shane, Chair of the FinCom, and Greg Johnson, Chair of Capital Improvement. Gentlemen, welcome. Thank you for coming. We received correspondence from the FinCom and also from Capital Improvement. I haven't had a chance to look over the Capital Improvement submittal, but certainly we can do that as the presentation is made. So why don't I turn it over to Mr. Shane? And, Mark, why don't you run us through a summary of what you're seeking to do with this town meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I handed out just a brief overview of some of the slides we will present at town meeting. And we could just skip to the second page, second slide. Why are we making this request? We feel at this point in time, there's a lot of redundancy in the process. We believe this will give the FinCom a lot more time to evaluate the capital requests and plan future funding requirements, and it will also provide town meeting with a more comprehensive, long-term financial plan recommendation. You go to the next page. The process that's in place today are the two slides on page three. Basically, to summarize, the CIC meets with department heads. Department heads fill out a request form. They meet with the department heads if, in fact, it meets the five-year plan. If it's not on the five-year plan, then they want to know if it's greater than two years, if it's greater than two. If there was a scope change, then they meet individually with the proponents, and then at that point in time, they rate it, and we've asked them to provide us with a report somewhere between six and eight weeks before a town meeting. At that point in time, we have to decide what we have to do. So if we don't get the information in a timely fashion, because we meet at least two to four weeks before town meeting, we have to, in fact, re-invite the proponents, have a discussion at our meeting, and make a decision, a judgment, without very much investigation or, what's the word I'm looking for, forethought. And then we have to meet with our Budget Subcommittee and decide how we're going to fund these articles, if, in fact, we can fund them. If we can't, we have to report back to the FinCom either way, and have another FinCom meeting, and then approve everything, and then we report to town meeting. And all that happens within a two-week period. What we're proposing is a little bit different process. And we started this process last May, approximately. So we've been working on it since last May. We've developed a five-year plan with the department heads. We've asked everybody, all department heads, to come in and present what they want to do for the next five years, understanding, of course, that things change. We also recommended to the department heads that they put no placeholders down. So if they know ahead of time, up to two years ahead of time, that they're going to need what they want, they should put it down. That point in time, we review the funding requests and see where we can fund and what we can't fund. At the end of the funding, we go back to the FinCom for approval of funding. We meet with the department heads as a group and explain to the department heads what we can fund and what we can't fund, and then we report to town meeting. Now, that will take place every six months. The objective here is to know ahead of time what's going to go on town meeting warrant. Because if we all agree ahead of time that we can fund certain articles and not others, and if all the department heads are in the room at the same time, we can reprioritize items with everybody's agreement. If we do it in a vacuum, we don't have that opportunity. So I think we'll save a lot of time, both for the FinCom and for town meeting and for the selectmen, because we'll only put articles on there that are going to be funded. And we'll know in August, early August, we'll have some idea of what the free cash numbers are going to be and what our carryover is going to be from the following, the prior year, as we did this year. So we did that. We did that process. We met with all the department heads. This is a good year. We had a lot of free cash and a lot of carryover and some excess levy capacity, so we could fund a lot of articles. We also asked for some to be passed over. So, I mean, that's the process, and it's an ongoing process. All right? It will happen at least on a bi-annual basis. And again, if things change over that time, we'll know two years ahead of time they're going to change, for the most part. So conclusions, rolling forecast for major project requirements, and we're not taking just capital items, we're taking major funding items, anything over the three-to-five-thousand-dollar level. So it doesn't matter if it's a capital project, a capital asset, a capital improvement, or a maintenance, we'll decide at that point in time how it's going to get funded, and if it means funding it out of the budget the following year, we'll fund it out of the budget. If it means funding it out of free cash, we'll fund it out of free cash. If we have to bond, we bond, and if we're going to pass it over, we're going to pass it over. Or not put it on the warrant at all, as it turns out. And by the way, the Finance Committee has set aside an average of eight-hundred thousand in capital on an annual basis going forward, and of course, that'll increase as years progress. So we know at least there's eight-hundred thousand to fund, and we can go from there. Another conclusion, continues to review funding sources. Since we have the long-range idea in our minds, and we all know on the Finance Committee what we can bond, what the debt schedule looks like, what the debt limit is, what our operational budget is, we can make a much better determination of how we can or can't fund these articles. We can manage your operational budget and long-term debt a lot better that way. At least we know ahead of time that we're going to have to tap stabilization or not tap stabilization if we're going to have to increase the debt. We can eliminate multiple presentations and save time. I mean, the department heads only want to make this presentation once. Right now, they're making it at least two times and a third time at town meeting. And we can come up with more timely reports for this, for you guys and for town meeting. Obviously, this year, we're a little, we're not going to be able to do that, but we will have it for town meeting. And that's our reasoning. We just think it's a much cleaner, simpler process.
Okay. Let me open it up to questions before we hear from Greg. Dean, do you have any questions for Mark?
When you say last May, Mark, I think we've even had discussions probably back two or three years ago on consolidation, how to get things, saving time. It's always been, I think the Capital Planning Committee members have, you know, always worked hard. A lot of times, they're on boards with barely a quorum, so it's been very difficult for them to do the things that have to be done. But this is something that goes back two or three, even four years back, especially when it was revamped, and there were even questions then about the logistics and all that. So I think it's, you know, something that has been talked about for a long time. But I think, as you said, it's nothing against the present members or the members, you know, that served in the past, so it's just something to, that there seems to be a little bit of disagreement. But this is something that goes back, you know, three or four years. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Bill?
Yeah, I personally get the economy gains, but I, you know, your meeting with department heads on an ongoing basis throughout the year, right? So, okay, so.
For a Subcommittee level as well.
Yeah, right. And that's specifically what I'm thinking about, because, you know, that may not be something the general public is aware of, but subcommittees meet with department heads on a rolling basis. So as their needs change, they stay in touch and can make adjustments as necessary, and then come back to the full committee to report out. You know, if I were a department head, I'd certainly want to see this process streamlined. And, you know, I know that one of the challenges the CIC has is, within their scope and purview, they don't have the affordability piece of it. It's not within their charter necessarily. And so we have one group doing something in terms of prioritization based on needs and requesting from department heads specific information and feedback and follow-up. And we have another group who's looking at the affordability piece, asking what could be similar questions but different, and asking for follow-up and more information. And so I've heard it on a number of occasions where a department head will say, "Somebody just tell me the rules." Because the committee, depending on its makeup, may have a preference for a long-term lease, and another committee may have a preference, depending on what's happening with the affordability piece, to go ahead and buy in that given year. And so the department heads kind of caught in between trying to satisfy everybody, giving everybody the information they have, they need. So, yeah, I think, as Dean said, we've talked a little bit about how we can make that process easier, how we can streamline it. For me, there's economies of scale possible here. And, you know, before we go anywhere with it, obviously, we want to hear from Capital Improvement Committee, but, so I get the nature of the presentation and what you're saying.
Just one more point.
Yeah.
I mean, if you look at a five, at the five-year plan, for instance, five years from now, the fire chief needs a million-dollar truck. And the Finance Committee doesn't want to come down to that year on town meeting floor, on town meeting warrant and go, "Well, we can't afford a million-dollar truck." So the part of the plan is, we throw two-hundred thousand at it for five years, and at the end of the five-year period, he has those million dollars, and we can make that decision way in advance of seeing that request.
So in the same way, we painted the town hall as a example, right?
Exactly. Exactly right.
All right. Yeah. Greg, why don't you tell us your thoughts on the situation? I know that there's also an article that you've sponsored on the warrant, so if you can tell us what your thoughts are on the one that's being sponsored by both the FinCom and this board, and then also what your board is seeking to do with the article you're sponsoring.
Sure. Thank you for seeing us tonight. It's the first time this iteration of the CIC has been included in this kind of a conversation. And I have to say, we weren't prepared to be discussing the FinCom's article because the request here that was made to us in writing seemed to be talking to us only to defend our own. But in light of that, we certainly have a couple of quick opinions and thoughts. As a matter of the state law, I'm not even sure that Article Five is in order. It seems to be out of order.
And why would that do?
Particularly, Mass. General Law, Part One, Title Seven, Chapter Forty-One, Section One-O-Six-B, talks about how the town, the first sentence, it's a one paragraph, so it's a very short, sweet description of what towns can do as far as capital planning. But the very first sentence, "A town, at its annual town meeting, may, by bylaw, establish a capital planning committee." Well, we're not at the annual town meeting, so it seems that as a matter of timing, we're simply putting the cart before or after the horse, depends on how you look at this. Beyond that, the next sentence goes on to describe how such a bylaw should prescribe the composition, the mode of appointments, the terms of the members in this committee. I know Article Five, I briefly skimmed it, again, not preparing to have anything to say about it at this time. It doesn't appear to satisfy those requirements in the state code. So just at a superficial level, it appears that right now, Article Five is out of order. Maybe something to be looked at in the future.
Well, no, let's look at it right now. We got town council here. Jerry?
No, it's, there's nothing out of order about it. Cities and towns are not required to have a capital planning committee. The general laws do authorize cities and towns to have capital planning committees. That law actually came effective in the Court of Home Rule Amendment, which is basically free to cities and towns to do whatever they think is best. So, no, nothing in the general laws require a capital improvement committee, unlike the Finance Committee, which actually is required, Financial Advisory Committee.
Okay.
Capital improvement is not, and a town can frankly put one in place because of the Home Rule Amendment at a general, at an annual town meeting or a special town meeting, and a town can undo it, as the Finance Committee proposes at any meeting. So, no, it's perfectly in order.
Does that answer that for you?
If I was a lawyer, I suppose so. I confess, I'm just a public servant here, so, you know.
Well, do you have some reason to doubt town council's opinion?
I do. I mean, everything he said seems completely accurate. I certainly would not say otherwise.
Okay. So you don't doubt his opinion, then?
That's not entirely accurate, though.
Okay.
What I'm saying, though, is in the very, well, as town council just said, there's no requirement in state code for us to have a capital planning committee. There is code suggesting that if we do it, there's a way to do it, Section One-O-Six-B, and it specifically, in its very first sentence, says, "You may do it at the annual town meeting." Well, we're talking about special town meeting right now, so it seems that we've missed the boat or jumped in the gun here a little bit. We want to discuss this after this fiscal year cycle, fiscal planning cycle is done. Our committee is more than willing to discuss. I mean, we're certainly, like I said, public servants. We want what's best for the town. But it just, at the surface level, seems like this is a little premature or a little late in the cycle. I appreciate everything town council said. There is no requirement that we do anything. But if we do, it says pretty clearly, "Annual Town Meeting," right there in the very first sentence.
That's for the creation of a capital improvement?
For the creation of one, now.
Okay.
The dissolution of one is, obviously, there's multiple parts to Article Five, so I could see where we could dissolve, you know, Article Eighteen, we could put in a, you know, block the space reserved for future use kind of thing. But what it doesn't, then the second half of it, of course, is, goes into the creation of what is effectively replacing that which we already have. So that's the part I suggest that maybe is.
Right. So beyond your procedural point, and you must understand that this board gives great deference to the opinion of town council.
As do we.
What about the merits? You know, the practicality of the operational issues between the Capital Improvement Committee, the Finance Committee, and the other town departments? Because that's really the essence of what we're trying to talk about.
Okay. Like I said, we weren't prepared for formal arguments on this, but we've certainly discussed it in the past, and every time the press calls me and asks for my opinion about these things, we've had to generate opinions. So, you know, not having been included in this process before, I apologize if this can be a little rough and around the edges, but I heard a couple of things discussed by both sides here. The department heads I have talked to, obviously, in the matter, of course, of doing our job, have described, thank you, have described to us, and actually, some of them have specifically said they like the process the way it is, because coming to CS can be a fifteen-minute process. They come in, they make their presentation, they're done. Going to other panels and boards has historically taken longer than that, with considerable extra frustration, other issues to discuss potentially. But as a matter of telling, you know, basically presenting, what is it that they need? What is their shopping list? Whether it be something they need or maybe a wish list for down the road. You know, that doesn't take but a few minutes to describe to us the finer points of a submitted five-year plan. You know, we can look through it, and if we have questions, we do so. We're wrapped up. The longest we've ever held the committee normally is a half hour, and that is when there's, like Parks, we just had in recently, because they have a lot of articles coming up. So, you know, there's a checks and balance kind of argument, as I pointed out in the R. Written Report for tonight, that, you know, I understand the desire that's being discussed here as far as the streamlining concept, but there is also a check and balance thing, and you can't, you know, you can't make things simpler than they are. I mean, you can change the way things are done, and I think that's what we're discussing here. It's more of a, we're not talking about just making it streamlined, we're talking about changing the way it's done. Because right now, we don't report to the FinCom by our bylaw. We work with them to produce reports, but we report to town meeting, and that's, you know, they're the ones who receive our report. So it may be, as town council pointed out five years ago in a letter to the FinCom Chair at that time, before any of us were seating members of our committee, you know, this is a long-going conversation, as you guys have mentioned, the town council pointed out that it's not inconceivable, I don't have the exact quote, but it's not inconceivable that our two committees would disagree from time to time about the merits of any given article. Obviously, the FinCom's ultimate concern is the bottom line. What does it do to the town's numbers, the books? Ours is more about representing, you know, what do they want? What do they need? Are they, you know, do they have merit? You know, we push back. We have told various committees, you know, we need more information, or your submittal didn't have enough detail, perhaps could we refinance this? And we do have authority to suggest changes to how we finance things. So for instance, the town windows, I've mentioned to a town administrator, you know, that's a big chunk of money. Now, I've heard since that maybe it's going to come in under the requested amount, but that's a huge chunk of money, and unlike what we did with the painting of town hall, where we phased that over several years and built up the money, we're shooting a half million dollars at once. Right now, as the FinCom chairs point out, although it's a non-binding concept, this capital reserve target of eight-hundred thousand dollars, you know, is, with the windows, is almost, is two-thirds gone with just one project. Now, of course, as I pointed out, and has been pointed out to us, this is a non-binding concept. This eight-hundred thousand dollars is a placeholder, and FinCom could explain its rationale better than I could, because it's their number. But we've tried to play ball with that. I mean, it's, town council, again, in the same memo from five years ago, pointed out that straddling us with this extra concept of what is the budget we have to squeeze all the requests into is outside the purview of our very nature. I mean, ours is not to worry about how we're paying for this. Ours is to figure out what is being asked for, is it legitimate? Can we move it around? But we're sensitive to these issues. I mean, we live in this town at the ultimate, and we're all town citizens here, so we're certainly sensitive to these details. But for instance, since August, that capital reserve target of eight-hundred thousand dollars, we were already over it in August with everything we knew from the first half of the year. By August, we're now five-hundred percent, just under five-hundred percent, over that target. The average for the next five years in the five-year plan of the capital expenses that have been requested is twice that capital target. I've asked FinCom before, hey, maybe we want to adjust that. He said, maybe we'll adjust that up over the years. That's the first time I've heard that there's any flexibility in that number. But be that as it may, I mean, we have an pressing right in front of us, need to make such an adjustment, because right now, such a target is already unfeasible and will be unfeasible for the next five years. So as a matter of planning, we're not exactly sure how the town plans on a number it already knows is fuzzy.
Well, you're aware of the free cash number, aren't you?
Actually, it's not a relevant detail to what our function of our committee has been. I'm vaguely aware from reading in the paper, it's about three million dollars.
And you're aware of the excess levy that the town has to work with as well?
I'm aware of the concept, but not the dollars.
Okay.
I will say, to that point, though, the amount coming before us, you know, like I said, it's five-hundred times the capital reserve target. At this point, last figures we were given, which was just last week, with all that compiled, is three-point-eight million dollars. So, I mean, we're going to need that levy. I've also heard that the town's talking about, it's one of the articles, to move one million dollars to help offset the taxes, so that really means there's only two million left. And we've talked about funding the pond to secure that. Granted, there may be state funds, we're well aware that that may not be the town's entire burden. Hopefully, that's the long-term goal here for the Pond Restoration Committee's ultimate goals. But if we use that money to secure that loan, that stabilization fund is already gone, but for two-hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
This is getting, with all due respect, this is getting a little off-base. These things can't be, there's, no money's being expended from stabilization account, and this is the essence of the problem that we inhabit. Greg, the numbers that you just expressed don't, again, this is the problem. You're not aware of the financial strategies that have been developed through the Board of Selectmen and also the Finance Committee, because there is ample money for the expenditures that everybody is supporting this particular year, and this is one of the redundancies that has to be corrected. So you just can't say that the state money's being taken from the stabilization account, because that's how it's reported tomorrow morning, and that is untrue. That is not happening. You have not seen it, or you've not studied it. One's worse than the other. I don't know which, but you can't say those things and just expect us not to comment on it.
I appreciate.
Please be careful.
I appreciate all the feedback you all provide us. That.
I think what we're trying to look for is, why do you and your committee feel that you can provide relevant information to the town and has done that, or have done that in the past in conjunction with the FinCom and this board? And the existing process that's in place, why? I take it that you're indicating that the existing process should remain in place, and I'm trying to determine the reasons that you have for that. And I'm trying to determine the reasons that you have for that.
Sure. And mind you, had we been included more in this process, I grant everything...
Well, you know, that's the third time you've said that, and I let it go the first couple of times. And, you know, I know that there were subcommittee meetings involved with the capital improvement committee and the finance committee, because I was at one of them. And, you know, I sat in the back, and I know Mark Shane was here, and I'm pretty darn sure you were here. And there was also at least one other representative from capital improvement, and the discourse went back and forth in terms of how this process could go forward. So, and I believe that was towards the beginning of the summer, at least. So, you know, you have been, this isn't a surprise to you, so I don't really want to hear that. You have been part of this process, maybe not to the degree that you wish or that you think it should have been, but you certainly were a part of the process and available to participate in it.
With all due respect, sir, if you could tell me those meetings that these happened? The only meeting that came even close to what I think you're referring to was, as the FinCom chair and pointed out, their very first meeting last May, not this May, but before, when they created their long-term planning subcommittee, which they're completely entitled to do, just as our committee is. They can do whatever internal organizations they want. In fact, at the time, we appreciated that, because that meant that there was a sort of a one-to-one correspondence, a mirror, that was easier to deal with than the entire FinCom and their schedule and budget and other issues that they have to deal with. So as a matter of town flow, that made sense. But then, after that meeting, now, mind you, that meeting we were only aware of at the very last minute, by dumb luck, by walking by the bulletin board upstairs. We've never been invited to a single meeting where our purview of capital planning, the existence of our committee, or the process of town planning within the town here, has been discussed or was on the agenda to be discussed. So granted that, you know, maybe, as you said, it's not to our, the way we would have preferred it had been done, but in all fairness, you know, if nobody invites us to these meetings, and only by dumb luck do we find out about them by walking through a bulletin, by a bulletin board in Town Hall, I'm not sure I agree with the ultimate tenor of your point, that we've been included. You know, like I said, by dumb luck, we were even at the first meeting, and at that, it was merely the committees talking about what they're doing, their startup, what they were looking for from the department heads. I will also point out, at that time, that the data that they had, their five-year spreadsheet, was out of date. It was information we had long since overhauled, as a matter of doing our business, since our bylaw requires us to collect five-year plans. And we, as soon as we got the updated numbers, we gave them immediately to their financial analysts and to the chair. So as soon as we get this fresh data, we push it right along. We don't hold anything back. They know everything we know. Town administrator has been carboned on all this, too, at least in this cycle. So with the extent he would want to look at these low-level details, they're available to everybody in this room to have had a chop at it. Where the process may have led us down here seems that the FinCom chair has just said he would like six to eight weeks before a town meeting to be able to do all the number crunching. We asked him the same thing before this warrant article was closed, and he said five weeks, but, you know, that's in the same realm. And, of course, he told me this, and I looked at the calendar the next day and read, "I had five weeks," was the day he responded and said, "We want that by five weeks." Well, now, the warrant's not closed...
Chairman, excuse me. The CIC chairman wrote me an email asking me when we needed that data, two days before I responded.
Use the microphone.
Thank you.
They heard you.
I'm sorry, I did not.
All right. Well, again, I understand what you're saying, but I'm trying to, you know, find out, you know, from your point of view, what the value is of the current process, and then maybe it'd be helpful for you if you try to explain what your proposed article is...
Sure, that's what we, that's what we thought was the only purpose of us being here today.
Okay, so why don't, let's go to that. So, let's see, that is article...
I was going to make it short and sweet, but as you said, you hadn't gone through it as yet. I'd be happy to. It's not particularly a long report, so...
That's what, Article 31?
That's correct.
Okay, so let's take a look at that, and maybe that'd be a little bit more helpful. So what are you trying to accomplish with Article 31 that doesn't currently exist in the bylaw?
As I'll say later in the written report, middle of the second page, basically, and this is what we presented upfront when we submitted our article, was that most of the language and the structure of what's in our proposal is unchanged from what's currently there. There were some minor tweaks for what we consider to be housekeeping, some grammar, spelling, consistency of language. So it's a matter of, you know, generally, housekeeping. More to the point, as I start with my report here, as soon as I became the chair last August, so over a year ago, I immediately started an internal review of the capital review process in town, what is our committee is, does, is required to do, what does the town provide us, what's best for the town. This included comments, as I mentioned, that were from town council from years before we were, any of us were currently members of the committee, and when there was different membership of the FinCom as well. So we've looked at arguments that have been held in the past before we were around, and we decided, you know what? We could fix this by changing the language here a little bit, being a little more clear as to, in what is said in the bylaw. It can more accurately, right now, it's not inaccurate, but it certainly could be more accurate. I once, you know, I used to work for Lotus Development Corp. in Cambridge there, and we went through an ISO 9000 review process. Essentially, it's a, for those who don't know, it's basically, you, ultimately, it's, you say what you do, and you do what you say. Everything you do as a policy is written down, and you conform to those policies, and there's measures to deal with it. So I took that strategy with our committee, noticing that previous discussions between the FinCom and the town council, and in some cases, the selectmen and town administrator, pointed out that there were, you know, various interpretations. You know, this is, like, for instance, that giving the, excuse me, imposing a budgetary number upon the CIC is artificial and contrary to their goals. Now, mind you, this is not my opinion. This was town council, as we've all discussed from five years ago. I could produce the actual date of that notice.
Could you just focus on this proposed article?
Sure.
And kind of tell us...
But this is the basis of this.
Okay, all right. I just want to try to maybe get to, you know, what the difference is from the existing bylaws to what you proposed.
Sure. So, for instance, I had read recently that some suggest that maybe we're trying to expand our powers here and whatnot. It is definitely not that kind of a measure. In fact, amongst all the other changes, most of them subtle, we introduced a new requirement that requires us to report to town moderator two weeks before a town meeting, because, as you may know, one of our responsibilities suggests that any article that's coming before a town meeting that does not, that has not been received by our committee in writing cannot be voted on. Well, the moderator certainly needs to know how his, how he's going to run the show effectively at the town meeting, and so we added to it a requirement. Seems to make sense that we would give him a report to let him know well in advance, so he's not being, you know, blindsided by any issues at the last minute as to how the flow should go.
Okay, so where is that? Is that under...
That's the third paragraph of the first page.
Section 5D?
5D, that's right.
Is that where you're at?
That's correct.
So let me just see here. So you're, you've revised 5D to indicate what, that their, the committee shall report to the town moderator at least two weeks prior to any town meeting? Is that what you're citing?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. All righty, what else?
So the, you know, while we're all talking about streamlining, as I go into my next paragraph of the written report, which would be section 5, part B, or part E, I'm sorry, you know, that's a section right now, it takes up about a page of material telling the CIC that has to collect a variety of details, demographic information, tax information, et cetera, details which the town already collects in various other places, and which, after working with the town planner, we found out that even had we collected them, there's nobody in town that is required to look at such a report, to make use of such data. So it appears to us to be, you know, a collection of data that's elsewhere, and which also then has no bang for buck, no value add for the town. So as a matter of streamlining, you know, one of our former members has, you know, who has now left us, suggested, why don't we just cut that out? As I mentioned, we worked with Larry Duncan, the town planner, and he suggested that, you know, wait a minute, maybe we could rework this a little bit, and so we introduced the, where we have to now also look at the town's current iteration of the comprehensive plan. So as we're making our planning decisions, and where people might be concerned as to, you know, who are these guys, and what are they making their deliberations based on, we decided to use the town's own goals, it's stated in the comprehensive plan, as that basis. So we introduced a streamlining one of the old process, which, of course, would have also been a burden to us, because we're not some paid, you know, marketing consulting firm that would generate a report, and where the data was already collected, and, you know, has no value add for the town for us to recollect it. You know, it seemed to replace that with something that took the town's planning initiatives, existing, you know, planning initiatives, and put it to its very core, seemed to be prudent, at the very least.
So those are two changes, 5D and 5E, and as I'm looking at it, you also made a change to 5C, is that correct?
That is also correct.
Okay.
So in 5...
What is that going to do?
So in 5C, as I'm, sort of the first full paragraph on the second page of our written report, we mentioned that, you know, we, of course, are striving to not only, you know, help the town out here, but we want to use best practices in so doing. And we, again, one of our former members brought to our attention, there's been a, there's a manual produced by the DOR that was written in 1997, and hasn't been adopted in any sort of formal way. Doesn't necessarily fit every community, like, you know, a one-size-fits-all kind of solution. But we've adopted, you know, and continue to look at ways to continue to adopt the strategies that the DOR felt were best practices. Mind you, this is back in 1997, so we're sort of playing catch-up on that score. But, for instance, in our current bylaw, it requires us to currently take a look at five-year plans, 10, 15, 20. Well, any reasonable financial analyst will tell you that, you know, beyond five years, I mean, most analysts will tell you that five years is kind of fuzzy, but beyond that is truly fuzzy. Now, we understand that there are commitments, and sometimes you know of things. For instance, the fire chief, as has been pointed out, has laid out beautifully a plan that goes out to the year 2026. That's the one department that's definitely on top of their planning, long-term planning game, and has given us already a heads-up on where the town expenses are going to be looking down the road. For instance, this $1 million fire truck in just about five years. So, you know, we're at it, all town committees and boards and departments did this, and I know that that's kind of one of the goals that the FinCom subcommittee has been trying to stress on them, to get in more long-term thoughts, so that we can do a better job collectively with our planning and resources and so forth. You know, we took into the consideration that the state said, all right, let's look at five years, the current year plus five years, so total of six years. We didn't want to change the spirit necessarily of the law, though, where additional information is available beyond those terms, so we just said that, you know, we sort of reduced that other, you know, those longer-term projections to a simple sentence. Anything beyond that scope, we should also account for as well. You know, it seems to eliminate the requirement of a specific five, 10, excuse me, a 10, 15, 20-year plan, which is sort of not practical in real terms financially, without losing the good guidance that that is obviously intended to the spirit of that law. So we continue to satisfy that spirit without forcing a requirement for a 10, 15, 20-year plan. I can tell you right now, no department beyond the fire department has, has anything more than a five-year plan, so I'm only just barely starting to come into the concept of a five-year plan. So...
Okay, so were those the major changes? That was 5B, you mentioned the five years. And I don't understand how it's worded here. It talks about five fiscal years, but then in the next sentence, it talks about the aforementioned six fiscal years.
Well, if you read the part before the five fiscal years, it'll ask, it tells you that they have to present...
Correct, by the time of the current fiscal year plus the subsequent, so that's how you come up with the F for mentioned, even though it's not, okay. All right, so that's a change also B, correct? Which you just talked about, instead of the current bylaw, which talks about trying to stretch things out 10, 15, and 20, you're just talking about a six-year type plan?
Six plus, plus awareness of anything beyond that. I mean, to the extent that's possible, we certainly don't want to shirk any responsibility.
Any other changes?
And from, strip, excuse me, strip from B was a blurb that seemed out of place, talking about, which is now the new part A. Basically, in part B before, it had said we could talk to basically any town, municipal, or state government official in the course of doing our deliberations. That has nothing to do, really, with the five-year planning concept in its specificity, so we just pulled it up to what became an opening in the flow of things, and that opening was caused by, again, a housekeeping measure. Section four of our bylaw, current governing bylaw, is about definitions. The definitions in there, then the first part of section five was a definition. Well, since we're going to be, since we intended to make some housekeeping measures, we moved all the definitions together, as is commonplace in most Coda that you'll see. So we moved all our definitions together. That created a hole, if you will, in the current structure at our 5B, excuse me, 5A, and we filled that hole with that segment out of 5B, which talks about our ability, our power, to, our responsibility to talk to whatever government officials that we need to. So we moved part of that out to simplify B, became A, since obviously we will need those abilities to talk to various government officials anyway. You know, it's certainly not unclear to say so. We did add to it, though, if you may take notice...
I see what you got here, yeah.
After doing the town council, he suggested some additional information, which we felt then should be tacked into 5A, where we can consult with other individuals, not just town reps and state officials, subject to our budget and...
I see that, yeah, okay. All right, so you've just expanded that a little bit. Okay.
But again, this is, like I said...
Anything else?
Kind of like an ISO 9000. Where we expand things was to merely head off, as I mentioned, we've seen the course of where this discussion has been in years before us, and there's been a lot of questions, and the same questions seem to get re-asked. Even tonight, some have come back up, and so if our bylaw was just a little more clear, a little bit, I mean, it's pretty good the way it is, but a few minor tweaks, we should head off any future questions, so ending confusion between various officials and committees. But also for our new members, who, you know, we've had fairly high turnover lately, you know, where it's been mentioned that our, we barely meet quorum, that is true, and yet, we're not handicapped by that right now, so don't feel like, you know, we need the help right now. We're on top of this. We've got everything we need to present for a town meeting this coming cycle, and since I've been chairman, we haven't missed a deadline. The only times that, like last fall, or, excuse me, last spring, they had to report exactly when they wanted, six weeks beforehand. Doesn't come out in the press, but it's true. I've got the emails, we've got the dates, it's all verifiable. Last fall, we missed a deadline, but that's because we didn't get...
That's okay, that's not, that's not so much significant.
Right.
I got an idea as to what your point is in terms of the, your proposal. Let me just turn it over to my colleagues, so they can...
Yeah, just one thing, that we're, there's been discussions that there's a breakdown in this process. We don't feel it's a breakdown within our Coda percent, you know, our bylaw. Obviously, there's some tweaks that we felt would help out and clarify things and prevent future problems. But in addition, I mean, we're the, like I said, the FinCom asked for five weeks this cycle, and we were notified of this deadline on the day of that deadline. Well, since we can't comply, I mean, no who could, perhaps a suggestion here in the planning of these things is that the, if we can't do this in parallel, and it sounds like the FinCom would prefer a serial order to the planning, the solution is to simply create a longer span of time between the closure and approval of the warrant and the actual town meeting. A simple resolution, it's just a calendar fix, and heads off all these head button here where, I didn't get my report on time. Well, if we have time to do our deliberations, they don't suffer. If they feed back all the updated changes that they are aware of, our reports sometimes have to be rewritten at the last minute, as was done in the last fall. You know, our report was changed on the night of town meeting, because we got new information that night. So, you know, there are issues in the flow, and if we're included, we'll be happy to work with everybody. I mean, we all are serving the town here. I mean, we don't fancy ourselves politicians. Our existence doesn't cost the town particularly much money. We only have a minutes taker in our budget. So, and again, as a matter of checks and balances, our bottom line isn't the bottom line. It's a matter of collecting the details from the various department heads, and then disseminating, sharing, and scheduling, or advising, as we should.
Okay. All right, thank you. Let me just turn it over to my colleagues to ask any questions, comments. Dean?
Yeah, no, I understand what Greg's saying.
Okay, Bill?
You know, I still wasn't able to get from your presentation the understanding of where there may be efficiencies gained. Because...
Okay.
We have one group who's dealing in capital, who's looking at affordability.
Sure.
We have one group, and working with the department heads, obviously, and we have another group that's working... have another group that's working with department heads, who's not looking at affordability, but simply projecting out what their capital needs might be, and trying to provide a priority for those.
That's right.
How is it that one group, whether it be FinCom, capital improvement, surprised me for a second, just indulged me.
Sure.
How is it that one group couldn't do that more efficient, efficiently?
The-
I'm, I'm just thinking efficiency.
Sure, sure, sure. You know, it is certainly possible, and, and as the FinCom chair has pointed out, that where they felt the, sort of the sins of our father were not getting them reports in a timely fashion.
No, no, I, I, here's what I don't want to do. What I don't want to do, Greg, is I don't want to go into whether they got the reports or whether town meeting, either in October or May, has changed over the last 20 years, because I'll tell you, they haven't.
Yeah, sure.
We've been holding the town meetings for the most part at, at just about the same time, so planning ahead of time, you know, you hit a deadline, to your point, some year ago, two years ago, and are surprised that, you hit a deadline six weeks ago and surprised to hear that it's five weeks. My question to you would be, what did you think it was? Right? And, and it's a rhetorical question, because I really don't need the answer, because town meeting comes up in October every time.
Sure, sure, and we're well aware of that.
But how is it that one group couldn't do all of this? Because I actually look at it and say, by charter, this inefficiency is built in. So it's not a FinCom not meeting their charter, or a capital improvement not meeting its charter, but economy of scale, where two boards, two boards, the information comes into one board rather than two boards. And, I'm just curious, on its basis, why, on its face, why wouldn't it-
I understand, and I didn't mean to create the illusion of a disparagement there between our committees, I only meant as an, as an example to cite that, you know, as a matter of timing sort of issues, but, but I take your larger point here. We have, at every turn, whenever we have a meeting during, when we're planning before a town meeting, we invite the, the FinCom or its subcommittee members, they're welcome to come in, and we can do a joint session. This solves that, that sort of, you know, I, this, this issue that, oh, well, now somebody's got to give the same report to two different bodies once, and then again. Well, if we had the one joint session, problem solved. We've invited them, I know the town administrator has attended such a meeting in the past, we've had FinCom members present at our meetings, so in theory, they can bring all the questions they would have that were beyond whatever we have, can be brought to our meetings, and we, we would certainly share the floor. So that's a process flow that has nothing to do with our existence or theirs, it's just a matter of how do we conduct business. Like I said, whenever we get new numbers, we share it, we get new reports, new details about projects, we share it. So, in theory, the board, the various board chairman and, and department heads could come to us, make their proposals. We had a planning commission, session with the FinCom last August, and we said, you know, let's talk about this process here, and they said, you know, if you've got a couple more years, getting, meeting your deadlines, we'll be happy to take the information that you give us on faith and work with it. We're not even one year away from that, and already, there's no faith. That's a side issue, but, but the point is, is that it's, it's a, it's a process flow. If we do it together, there is no redundancy, if we attend the sessions together. If we provide them the updated information, they don't need to recollect it. So, we can solve the problem of the redundancy by simply not asking to be redundant. They've created a, a subcommittee that looks exactly and mirrors us in just about every way. But as I said before, that makes a good, you know, one-on-one, that's a good communication thing, that helps with the process, that allows us to communicate with five individuals instead of 15 and their various schedules. So, we've been working at this, chipping away, making it better as we go, and so, while I, I take your point that, you know, why couldn't one committee do that? I think the answer was also in your questioning there, that the bylaws are sort of constructed from the top to, in a way, to not be in one place. That's the way it was designed. One could argue that the legislatures that put that process in place did so on purpose. What was that purpose? You know, you'd have to review the notes of the various legislatures, but, you know.
And the only other thing, I wanted to comment on something Brian had said, and that was regarding, you, you made three references, or four or five references to a process now, just for the benefit, at least of your committee-
Sure.
You need to understand at least my position on it. There hasn't been a process. So, so-
So it's not just us, okay.
No, 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 and let me say it this way. This is the first time a proposal has been put forward. There hasn't been a process where this board, at least to my understanding, at any meeting I've attended or any minutes I've ever read, where the, the Board of Selectmen have talked about this type of change to the bylaws, having to do, anything to do with Capital Improvement Committee. So I just want to let you know, and maybe somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't remember participating in at least seven years, so, so I can tell you-
It's not just us.
This process is now.
Very good.
This is the process.
And as I said, we're very happy to be here.
But alluding to a process that didn't exist, or some fictional process, I'm just telling you that from the Board of Selectmen standpoint, there, this is the process. And this is one that the chairman laid out to say, let's hear, let's hear from the different committees, let's talk about what might be in the, in the best interest of the community.
I was only reacting to other comments where people said that this had been a discussion, there had been planning and thought in the last multiple years.
No, no, I, I didn't say that I didn't, I didn't say that I hadn't heard of the concept before.
I got you.
I've just never been a part of any discussion, any meeting, any, I've heard people mention the, the concept of it.
Yeah, and the, the discussions I was referencing was meeting between you two committees. Mark?
Just, just as a little history, which I feel may or may not be necessary at this time, but, but one of our members brought it up at the meeting last Wednesday night. The CIC was formed in 94, I believe.
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five. But it was at the suggestion of the Finance Committee that because we didn't have the, the capability of doing this kind of work at that time, that we, because we would do the same thing, we would have all proponents come to the meetings, and we'd have to make decisions in a short period of time. So the recommendation at that time was, form a capital improvement committee through town meeting, and let them do the, the detail work and the background work, and then bring that information to the FinCom so we in fact can decide how to fund, et cetera. Since that time, it was like a year and a half later, I believe, we hired a financial advisor, we have a little bit different makeup of the board, where more people are involved than they were before, and are willing to do a lot of the work. So, that's why this proposal has come forward, because we now have the capability of doing that work.
Well, I know there was a capital improvement committee before, the bylaw was revised, I think that's what it might be.
Yeah, that may be, that's right. It was before my time, but I remember Bobby Dina mentioned it.
It was, it was rewritten, in fact, I, I served on the committee that, that did write this bylaw in 1995. Jerry?
And let me just follow off of that concept, Mr. Chairman, it really relates to Article 31, not Article 5.
Yeah.
Assuming for the moment that Article 5 is defeated, if it, if Article 5 passes, then the majority will have to move Article 31 out of order, because town meeting will have voted to eliminate Article 18, so you can't amend what's been eliminated. But for the moment, let's assume that that is defeated or passed over, Article 5, then you come up to Article 31. And a few points in that regard, and just to correct a little bit of Mark's history here, I've been around longer, this particular iteration of the capital improvement bylaws, it's been one since the 1970s, the capital improvement committee, worked up Capital Planning Committee originally, which would consist-
Capital Planning Committee, that's what it was, yeah.
... one member of the Finance Committee, the Town Treasurer, and two sort of citizens that lied for many, many years. In 1995, your board, not you folks, although Dean was on it, part of the TQN process, Total Quality Management, put a total quality management team together, which over a period of like six months, not meeting constantly, but developed this bylaw, and a lot of different citizens were involved in it, and did a lot of work and came up with this bylaw, put this in place, and, and went into, you know, into action after that. That's important to this consideration, I think, in this regard. I, this version that was provided for the warrant came in, I think literally at the last minute to put it in the warrant, so there was no opportunity for review, I hadn't seen it in advance, and when you get something like this, you've got to put the warrant together, so, and I don't take it upon myself to change things in this way, I, I can't do that, frankly. The people work with me, the Finance Committee, you know, months ago, asked me to help them with the draft of what they did, and I helped them, and others do, but this didn't happen that way, which is okay, it doesn't have to happen that way, but we didn't like this, and it really needs more input. Setting everything else aside, but there should or shouldn't be a capital improvement committee, this has some problems in it in terms of the way it's structured, it should have been structured as a pure amendment and not as an elimination of the existing bylaw sheet.
Right, that's what I, that's what I thought, Jerry, because it sounds like they're only looking to amend four and five, and yet the whole-
Right, and there's a number of things that are like-
Vegas being thrown over the bat.
They're not, they're not ill-intended, but they're not necessary. There's in the first, there's like an exclusion of a constable as being eligible, although I've been to that, I've written to an opinion, constables are not town officials, so we need that in there. There's language in here about borders, change to the definition does not include capital improvement, it may entirely from department budgets. It's not necessary, that's within the existing, the structure of the existing bylaw. There's a provision in there, one sentence, just says the town administrator may act on behalf of any department head or chair, of course, and well, that's really not consistent with the law, town administrator can't act on behalf of the school committee or other elected officials. So there's a number of things like that, that really need to be changed and tweaked and worked on.
Sure, sure.
The, the concept of streamlining it, maybe particularly elimination of that surplus at the end is probably a good idea, but it'd be my recommendation to your board and to the town meetings, pass this over, have a group look at it to summation of the capital improvement committee, input from your board who originally structured this, and this gets something that actually does work better, you know, than what they proposed right here, after giving it some time for consideration and bringing it forward to the end of the town meeting. That would be my suggestion.
Yeah. Just one second, I was, yeah, yeah, the, the, the problem that I found with, with capital improvement, and I did serve on that, that committee with a number of under, other individuals in 1995 to come up with the existing bylaw, and, you know, the intent at that time was really to have one-stop shopping. It was, you know, to, to formulate an annual report of, of the capital needs five years from now, 10 years from now, and out as far as reasonable, knowing, of course, as, as people have said that things change, but also the consolidation of all of this other information in, in section 5D, which, you're right, it is located in other sort, in other areas, but the whole idea-
Excuse me, 5E, I think you mean, the, the report?
5D, yeah, I'm sorry, the, the consolidation of information in section 5D of the existing bylaw.
I think you mean 5E of the existing bylaw?
Yes, it's 5E.
5E, okay, I must have an old copy. But, you know, it's 11 items, you know, that-
Exactly.
The, the idea with the intent at that time was to have all of that information in, in one spot, which would be a resource for the FinCom, for the Board of Selectmen, for the Planning Board, it was a resource for, for, for all of the town departments to go to and, and match up some of the town demographics with, with some, some, some needs. And, and what I saw over the years, and it was dependent upon the membership of the committee, and, and it has changed over the years.
True, true.
And it seemed different folks took on different ideas as to how the reports ought to look, and, and really what it devolved into is, is what we have today, kind of like a last-minute report to the special town meeting, and, and the annual, to the extent that there might be capital items, with various rating systems that we've had from different committees, you know, scores, I don't know, one to five, one to seven, one to 20, there were all these, these different things. So, you know, the, the, the committee, and, and I don't want to say through, through the fault of anyone, it was just the, the operation and the practice of the different individuals involved, really has gotten away from, from the intent of the bylaw. I don't know that, you know, it's so important that this, this, this report comes out, you know, two weeks, three weeks, five weeks, I mean, it ought to be here, you know, for FY12, FY11, FY13, so that, you know, your annual town meeting can utilize it, your special town meeting, so, so that, that, that's the problem that, that I've found with capital improvement over the years, it really has gotten away from, from the intent of being this, this, this resource of material for different departments to use. I, I haven't really seen a good, you know, five-year plan. I see the listing, I see the inventories, you know, fire department, they want a fire truck next year, they want pumps, they want this, but, you know, to me, the, the intent of a report was something more, there should be, there, there, there was intended to be some narrative, you know, pluses, minuses, you know, you know, this is a good thing because, if we don't do it, these are some of the consequences, and, and none of that ever materialized. And then my experience with capital improvement, on, on some of the capital articles that, that I've sponsored, is, is the, the examination goes far beyond what, what the article, the article itself, you know, really seeks to do. So, you know, when, when the Finance Committee had talked about kind of, you know, getting back to this and, and bringing all under one roof, the capital evaluation, along with the, the, the financial component in terms of funding, it, it seemed to make a lot of sense. So, so that's really kind of the thoughts that I had, you know, going into this, but you're, I'd like to give Mr. Abizler a chance to talk, because he wanted to say something.
I was going to say, he was actually present at this past week's FinCom meeting.
Okay, sure, yeah.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. All I want to say is I want to give you a little bit of background about why the committee itself decided that we wanted to change this actual article itself, because when I joined the committee in January, we had met with the Finance Committee, or at least the subcommittee of the Finance Committee, they were saying they weren't getting that information that they needed in a timely manner. So, this committee, the Capital Improvement Committee, wanted to eliminate from the bylaw most of those articles in section E, which had already been compiled by others in the town, and without knowing that background that you just provided, felt it was outside the scope of the Capital Finance Committee to include all the statistical data that was being rendered there. We wanted to focus the committee, because one of the comments that we had heard from the Finance Committee and other people is, there was no structure, there was no set procedures as such. We wanted to come up with a set procedure so that when we provided a five, 10, 15-year plan with the department heads, that it would be of value to you as the Board of Selectmen to the Finance Committee. Now, we're somewhat restrained in that we don't always know when certain items are going to come up for the warrant, for example, a pickup truck, something breaks down, that's a last-minute item that we wouldn't know about six months ahead of time. But our purpose of refining that article was to provide more timely manner. We had no idea that Article 5 was going to be on the warrant, presupposing that the Finance Committee was also going to, in effect, as I would say, duplicate what we were doing, and they're saying that we're duplicating what they're doing. It, it really doesn't matter, and I can see the duplication there, and it's up to town meeting to decide what they want to do, or set up a committee as the town council had suggested and deal with it on a comprehensive manner. But I just wanted to give you some background, we were thinking of this so that we could come up with the information for the necessary folks to make some legitimate, intelligent decisions, regardless of where the money was coming from, because as part of our charter, so to speak, in Article 18, we don't care where the money's coming from. Our purpose is to evaluate the capital improvements, to make recommendations whether they should be funded or not funded. Where the money's coming from is out, the way that it currently is, is outside the purview of that committee. It's up to the Finance Committee and you as the Selectmen where the money's going to be coming from. So we wanted, back in January, to streamline the process, to give enough information so that you folks could get some intelligent information in a timely manner, as much as possible. That's why we came up with Article 31. It was probably an oversight, not contacting town council previously, but we wanted to get it on the warrant so that we could implement it and provide new information, so you didn't run into the same problems that you had run into over the past five years or 10 years, where you had one rating structure of five, one of 10, one of 15, one of 20. We wanted to put that process in effect so that you didn't have those problems, and people didn't say, what does this mean? We wanted to be consistent.
And see, I think if the committee had just gone back maybe to the intent of this original bylaw, put together an annual report, which really, you know, takes into account the most up-to-date information that you have in terms of departments' five-year plans, then as articles come forth on any town meeting, you've got the information to draw on. Oh, wait a minute, you know, Parks Department, they want a pickup truck, yeah, we've got that right here, okay, and then you can report to it, you know?
Right.
And there's not any of that last-minute information. So I think that's, you know, that, that, that's where I see, you know, the failings had been, that the committee never seemed to, you know, compile that resource of information to draw on, so that, you know, information, you know, things that come up at a town meeting, and, and, you know, there are exceptions, but by and large, a lot of these things have been on the books for quite some time.
And if I may, that's one of the things that the committee had discussed, for example, having the department heads think of outside the norm, for example, the roofs and the windows and things that would be coming up in the future. For example, now we have the, the police department roof, I know we have a new fire station, well, what's the, you know, the, the limit of a roof on a fire station, is that going to come up in the five or 10 years? the five or ten years? It's something that those department heads can't think about in the long term. I know five or ten year, fifteen, twenty year planning is outside the scope, but if you just put a new roof on, you say, well, maybe in twenty, twenty-five years, I'm gonna have to replace the roof again. So I can put that down on the twenty year plan.
Absolutely.
Sometime like that. That's what our intent was.
And, and to the point where you were just discussing how a process ought to go, that's something we are doing. Uh, in fact, that's exactly the process we had in spring, because there were only three articles that came up for town meeting. And nobody, none of the department heads met the current existing deadline is January first. Um, to the most, best of my knowledge, no department has ever presented their five year plan by that deadline since I've been on the committee, which is about three years now. But you're absolutely right. You got a five year plan, you've got something to work with. And that's how we did our job this past spring. That's how the FinCom got the report they needed at the time they had requested, and we presented it to you all. So that's exactly what our committee does. Now, beyond that, um, I guess where you were talking about in the past, you know, there were different makeups and, and, you know, at the time, the FinCom couldn't do this, so they needed a little assistance, hence the existence of, or the changing, re-tasking of the capital planning committee. That's exactly, uh, benefit we still provide. I mean, I, I've read an email from the FinCom chair, and I believe at the last meeting this past, uh, on the tenth, uh, it was, it was pointed out that the long-term planning subcommittee hasn't yet, or at the time hadn't yet completed its deliberations. We're done. I haven't written up the final report, but the work's done. Um, you know, we've got, we also checked the balance and balanced the numbers. As I said, at that very first planning, uh, long-term planning committee meeting where they presented their five year spreadsheet, we already knew that data was out of date at that first meeting, and we scheduled, as, as you may recall, we provided and promised and did provide the updated data we had already collected. So we provide a service to the FinCom, um, whether they've chosen to use the service and how they use that service is entirely up to, to their internal, you know, mechanism, you know, proper processes, which is by law up to them. Uh, but, you know, we satisfied the goal, collected the data, made sure it was fresh, uh, and, uh, and we, and that's, you know, so we provide them, you know, we, cause both of our committees are entirely made up of volunteers, unpaid volunteers. So I, you know, you know, I hear that, oh, we're working really hard, we've got people working long hours to present a plan that, last of my knowledge, is not done. Ours is with, with far fewer members. And yet, I'm thinking, well, why, we're spinning wheels as a town here. Why are we doing redundant work that's maybe even taking a little slower, when a smaller, leaner committee sails right through that process? Uh, so we produce that product in a, in a shorter amount of time. So as, as to your original point then, well, where does this help the town in the grand scheme of the process flow and streamlining? We produce a, a higher quality work in less time with fewer people that should assist them. If there's enough time to allow that process to run serially is another issue. Uh, as you mentioned, we know when we budgeted out and projected well ahead when town meetings are gonna be, but when warrants close is another matter. And of course, that's not up to us. And as, as Russell pointed out, you know, the addition of that last minute fire truck, or widget that broke, or roof that needs replacing because of a snowstorm, well, that obviously comes as a matter of the warrant articles. And that, uh, you know, if it happens less than five weeks beforehand, doesn't satisfy the FinCom's need. So I could see the pressure to try and unify it. Uh, but we've long since determined the rest of the outline of that plan. And so all we need to know is, is that official? Yes, then we add it to our plan, bink, done. Provide the update, move along, everybody's happy, should be happy.
Okay.
So that's the intention.
I think we're kinda rounding out the Larry-
One, one comment, uh-
Yeah.
Haven't you in fact made an argument for the continuation of the CIC? Can't the CIC provide a valuable resource to the finance committee? If you streamline the CIC and refocus them on this report, I'm sure they have a three member subcommittee that are dealing with numbers. Maybe they don't have the facility or the people to prepare this report. Why can't you restructure the CIC and more focus their role in, in things like that? You've got three people that are willing to work. So I just, maybe we restructure the CIC and take a look at what their role should be, and work with the finance committee and report, and producing the reports like you talked about.
Okay, and that goes towards Jerry's point.
Right, exactly.
All right, great.
And I do apologize that we got this in sort of under the wire at the last minute. Um, that is a function of our, our, our low, uh, our open vacancies. I must point out a, just a quick comment about that, though. Um, we, we, last fall, were authorized a, I restored the clerk position that used to be there, as you may recall, probably had one at your time. Um, that, over the years, for whatever reason, was, was done away with, and all we have is a minutes taker. Uh, and she's doing a great job, but she's also our acting, uh, you know, clerk, because we really do need a clerk to help make the five of us, or now three of us, to help get the process done. Well, that process, we were authorized, and that, that position was restored by the personnel board back last September. And of course, we all know that you have to go through Article Two of the town meeting where the budget goes through and all that, and that's not done until the annual town meeting. So it wasn't really approved until this past May. But all the, every time this comes up in the press, and mind you, like I said, I'm the one getting the phone calls, as the chair, hey, what's your reaction to whatever that I've never heard before, which I, I truly love, that sarcasm, since it won't, won't appear in, in written form.
Welcome to our world.
Right.
Welcome to my world.
So, so, so when that happens, you know, it's, it's, well, aside from highly frustrating, as, as Larry pointed out, you know, we're public servants, we're not politicians, uh, you know, we don't think we're costing the town a lot of money, we're doing extra effort or forcing anybody else to do extra efforts. In fact, we the ones, like I pointed out before, we're making it simpler for the department heads. They come with us with a simple focus. They don't have to worry about additional tack on-
I, I think we got a good understanding, Greg, of all of the points you've made. So, um, you, you know, obviously, we've, we've heard from the finance committee, uh, we've had experience, you know, with the operation. Um, I think Jerry's, uh, comment, uh, has some good merit to it, so-
And by the way, we absolutely agree. We would love to participate in the process of that. I was highly surprised that my proposal went through without one bit of red ink on it, cause I've never written a law in my life-
So maybe, you know, maybe we go forward with, uh, what is it, Article, Article Five?
But might I suggest that these-
Maybe go forward with Article Five and then, you know, establish a, uh, exploratory committee to do just exactly what you've talked about and try to, uh, come up with a more focused bylaw.
But if we go ahead with Five, then we will have eliminated that which we are, I mean, we've already done the work, we've brought the five years and then some. Why eliminate it if we're only going to then tweak it, restore it, you know, modify it, and then put it back in place? Uh, again, that's why we felt this, at this time, was a matter of just housekeeping, you know, and to the town council's point, you know, everything seems reasonable like that. We're saying, well, why would you put constable in the eligibility section? Well, as, as town council knows, you don't probably need to do that. As anybody who just lands like a Martian out of space gets appointed to this committee after he's a town member, registered voter in the town, he's not gonna know that. We ask these questions, and we've been told maybe sometimes we ask too many questions. Part of that has to do with the fact that the bylaw isn't as clear as it could be. It's not un, like I said before, it's not unclear, but it could be more, there could be more accuracy to it, and that was the intention of-
I think we've covered that track, cause I have different comments on that. I think the bylaw is clear, it just hasn't been followed. Uh, but okay, I understand your perspective and, um- The board, have we all said, are there any other, uh, question, comments?
No.
I wanna thank you for your time, and, uh, we'll, we'll go forward to town meeting and, uh, see how we can approach it.
Thanks, Greg.
Okay?
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you. Thanks.
Come on.
There you go. And that concludes the, uh, public hearings. The next item that we have is the town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, monthly financial update. I'm pleased to report that all budgets under the jurisdiction of the board are on target. Uh, secondly, I'd like to give you a project update. As of today, the painting project is possible, uh, probably ninety-five percent complete within the next, uh, one to two weeks. We'll be wrapping it up. Uh, they put up, they worked this past Saturday and Sunday, and they took care of the clock tower. So that was good, and we gave them a checklist today that they're gonna go through, and hopefully, as I said, another one to two weeks. As to the masonry project, we have completed work on the west entry, um, with just repairs on the building and the reinstallation of the rails are remaining. We've begun work on the east side stairs, and I expect that to be done in a couple of weeks. So we're, we're moving quite well at this point. Uh, my third point, uh, special town meeting, as you know, is a week from this evening. Your packets will be ready by this Friday. If there's something else that anybody needs, just let me know, and I'll include that within. Uh, this next point, very, very important. Uh, the last few days, I don't know if you gentlemen have been getting any telephone calls on the cable bill. We've been getting some calls, quite a few calls and some appearances at the desk upstairs, and people a little unhappy. Uh, I don't, unfortunately, I don't look at my cable bill. My wife does that, and we, we needed Jerry, I went to Jerry today to bring down his, uh, cable bill. What they've seen-
Jerry has a sample cable bill.
An actual one, but he, he had it with him. Uh, what's been happening, and again, they indicated that there was a-
Is this Comcast or Verizon now?
Comcast.
Okay.
And what they, uh, what they seem to be telling us is that there was an added cost on to the bill. And actually, we're telling a little fib, we were saying, is they were implying that the Board of Selectmen had, it said Town of Milford was incurring another cost, and that was, that was certainly not the case. The only thing that I could think of that's changed in the last, uh, few months was the PEG access. So Jerry and I got together today, and that's exactly what it was. Um, for the last thirty years or so, PEG access, which is public, educational, and governmental, as you know, was provided on the Milford channel, and it was completely operated by Comcast. Prior to the recent renewal of the Comcast license, they let us know, they being Comcast, that they would no longer provide PEG access support in terms of a percentage of their gross revenues with additional capital money, so that the town or an access provider designated by the town could continue and hopefully provide better PEG access programming. Under federal law, going through this with Jerry, uh, we understand that there's an absolute right of the cable companies to pass through these PEG access charges to the customers. The Town of Milford, which I've been explaining, has no control over that. The recent licenses with Verizon and Comcast negotiated this PEG access support funds, and how much money was gonna be paid by the companies, to the new provider, which is now the Milford Community Media Center, Inc. And they are the organization, the corporation set up by the board, uh, that will provide the public governmental educational programming that was done by Comcast. That happened in October of this year. Those, that's when the changes became effective. Milford Community Media Center has taken over, and presently, they're outfitting the studio down on South Main Street. And this was necessitated because of the loss of the Comcast studio and the equipment. And as one can see from the programming, uh, they just recently started, uh, filming the finance committee meeting. So it's hoped, uh, that there'll be significant improvement for the residents, uh, in regard to the PEG access. In the course of negotiating the recent agreements with the Board of Selectmen, with, uh, no, during the course of these, the Board of Selectmen consciously tried to keep to a minimum the amount of money that, um, could be passed through. Most other communities were settling on percentages of, uh, five percent of gross income, and Milford settled on four percent. So you folks were well aware of it, and in fact, made a conscious effort to keep the, the costs down, these pass-through costs. So you did that during the, um, during the life of your negotiations. Also, um, all folks should understand that the Board of Selectmen had no choice in this matter. If, if we were going to continue to, um, to have the PEG access, there was no alternative but to get the funding from the companies, the companies being Verizon and, and Comcast. And in turn, the companies have an absolute right to pass through those fees so, to the customers. So again, this board, I wanna make it clear that this board, as you well know, you did, you made a conscious effort to, to reduce the cost, but under federal law, there is that right to pass through it. That's what we're seeing. That's the additional two or three dollars on the Comcast and Verizon bills from now on. I hope that clears it up a little. Uh, that was my intent. Again, we did receive ten, twelve, fourteen phone calls, and we did have some people, and I know there'd be some more coming forward, and I hope that, uh, I hope that helps.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Dean, any questions, comments?
No, Louis, thank you. Cause I received a couple of calls, and I call those, I take, I take the fee a question is like two dollars or sixty-four cents.
With the Comcast. I don't know what the number is with Verizon.
Yeah. Verizon, it's always been embedded, right? There's nothing new to the Verizon bill.
I, I don't know, I don't have Verizon, but I assume it'll be showing up just like the Comcast, cause they're gonna blame, uh, they're gonna try and blame somebody else also.
It might go up because their payment increased once Comcast signed on, but it was always part of it. And Comcast, I think, was part of it too, but it was such a small amount because they were, they were providing-
They're the ones that are gonna be impacting-
They were providing the, the service.
Verizon's been paying it.
So they won't notice it then.
Yeah, there's no, there's nothing more to pass through, no change this October to them.
But the Comcast folks-
The amount they have to pay increases once Comcast signed on. Remember, we signed them to a lower rate until Comcast signed.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right.
And they'll be passing- And they have to match whatever Comcast-
They'll be passing that through to us.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Well, at least it's not to the eighty-something percent of the water company, but it's not helped on the Verizon side or the Comcast side. All right.
Hey, just look what happens. Every, every month, we get, receive a letter saying they switched these programs over to another side and-
Dropping service, picking up service, dropping channels, yeah.
Twice a year, they-
It's hard to even keep up with-
Prices on programming and equipment, so we have no control of it. It's just a terrible situation.
Thank you, Louis.
Thanks, Louis.
Um, I just wanted to comment on the steps, uh, on the side of the building. They're beautiful. And, uh, so looking, looking forward to having that project finish off with the railings and the finished work at the, at the base of the building. But, uh, the steps, the-
Yeah, they do.
Patio or porch, uh, whatever it is on the top there, just looks-
All granite, looks right.
Did a nice job.
Yeah.
Did a nice job. So, uh, I don't think we're gonna be seeing any separation on those over the years.
Wow, hopefully not, huh?
It's New England, but I think this'll last a good long time.
Yeah. Great, okay. Well, thank you, Louis. Uh, the next item that we have is under old business, and we have the, um, warrant articles for the upcoming October twenty-second town meeting. And I think we also need to actually take a vote to adopt this warrant, because since our last vote, the, um, warrant changed, uh, I think, what, to add one article, though?
Right.
Okay, so I'll need a motion to-
Motion versus the chairman.
Motion made to approve the, uh, special town meeting, uh, warrant of October twenty-second is provided in our package.
Second.
Seconded. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor. Any opposed? That's unanimous. And then traditionally, you know, we've looked at town meeting warrants to see if there are any articles sponsored by any other boards or committees that, uh, the Board of Selectmen might wanna comment on, um, take, take a vote on, uh, discuss, et cetera. Obviously, I think our articles that we sponsor, uh, we, we certainly adopt. So with that, I'll, I'll open it up to the board. Are there any articles, Dean, that you'd like to take a special look at, or?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, once again, Article fourteen, the, uh, we've talked about it. I know the last meeting, the board was very, very, upon restoration committee.
Yeah. Okay. Make a motion to support that? Motion made to support it?
Yes, I'll second it.
Seconded. Any more discussion? Uh, if not, all in favor. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Are there any other articles? Uh, a number of capital items on here, um, as we all know. Um, obviously, other articles, we've, we've been in contact with the committees, in terms of Article thirty-nine, transferring funds to offset the tax rate. Uh, we've more or less initiated that. Stabilization account, we've worked hand in hand with the finance committee, uh, the town administrator, town treasurer. So, a lot of these articles, we, we, we have been involved in and certainly, um, support. Are there any articles that you wanted to comment on, Bill, usually?
Yeah, the only, the only other thing is that, um, you know, I, I don't think it would be appropriate that we get into the zoning bylaws, but, unless somebody wanted to. But, you know, certainly, um, I think there's an opportunity to, uh, support the library, uh, Board of Trustees, the park commissioner articles, most certainly the fire chief, as it relates to the purchase of the, um, fire engine. We're talking about, um, that's still going forward, right, Louis?
What, what is that?
Sixteen?
The fire engine?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the town council's purchase of computer equipment, um- Is the Town Treasurer's thirty-two, the post-employment liability fund still at four hundred? Recommended?
I think there was a.
I think there's discussion about something a little bit left.
To reduce it to two hundred. I don't think the Treasurer agrees, but I don't know if she's going to.
She disagrees either, right?
I don't know that.
Yeah, okay.
I see two hundred on the, on the spreadsheet, yeah, as of October.
We run the risk, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, Billy. We run the risk unless you.
Yeah, I know.
We're gonna leave one or two out, we're gonna.
Yeah, I was gonna leave planning out, let planning go by way of remanding to the planning board, because, you know, we've had, as Brian stated, we've had an awful lot of discussions about all of these. And frankly, I just don't see anything that strikes me as out of the ordinary. These repairs have either been necessary, we're not bypassing the four hundred thousand dollars required for the police department's water leaks. I just don't see it. So, uh, you know, I'm in support of going forward with everything other than the planning articles, unless somebody wanted to make a, you know, a discussion for that, and I'd certainly be willing to take that up. Because I don't know that anything I'd exclude other than those for remand to planning.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think that's pretty much the, the, probably the consensus of this board. Many of these articles, like I said, we've had a hand in. I think it's a good warrant in the sense that addresses a lot of needs that probably have been around for a little bit. And, uh, you know, now we've got some funds, so we, so we can address some of these things. Okay, so, uh, is there any other old business?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Bill, do you have any old business?
I don't know old business, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Under new business, we have a request from the First Congregational Church of Milford to obstruct a public way to do a ten-kilometer hunger walk on Saturday, October twenty-seventh.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion made second, and that's gonna begin and end at Draper Park. And walk begins at, uh, ten a.m. All in favor, any opposed? That's unanimous. Uh, the second item that we have is a request that came in from Carolyn J. Saint Martin of Fourteen Prentice Avenue, a licensed psychologist. And she's looking to address some traffic issues. The Town Administrator sent a request to review that to our town engineer, and his recommendation is that a one-way sign on Prentice Ave at its intersection with Spruce Street be erected, and one additional resident-only parking permit required to be installed on Prentice Ave approximately fifty feet from the intersection of Spruce Street.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor, any opposed? That's unanimous. We have an application from the Milford Youth Center in conjunction with Milford Catholic Elementary School for a beer and wine event on Thursday, November fifteenth, uh, six p.m. to midnight for a comedy show.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous. Kathy Mahoney, on behalf of the Girl Scouts, I believe, is looking to use the municipal parking lot located next to the food pantry on Sunday, November fourth, from eleven a.m. to five p.m.
Motion.
And, um, that's, uh, she's the scouting for food drive coordinator.
Yeah, good effort to help. Um, I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. We also have a package of information from the Town Administrator in terms of a copy of the job description of the Town Administrator, a proposed application process, a timeline, and salary schedules from, from other towns. So I had asked Lou to put this together for us to get, uh, for us to go forward on, um, um, seeking his replacement upon his retirement. And the timeline that had been presented, I made some scribble notes to it and, and got it out to both of you last week, just to give you as much advance notice as, as possible, so that we'd be able to talk about this this evening and also hopefully move, move forward. In essence, the timeline talks about an advertisement period in either the Milford Daily News, the Town Crier, starting on October twenty-second, also publishing in The Beacon by October nineteenth for the November issue. And I believe that, that accesses the MMA website as well, probably for much longer than the month of November. Lou has put together a proposed application packet, which is similar to what we've used for other positions. I've kind of put in a due date of December seventh. Also, having a time period of December tenth to the fourteenth for an initial screening of these applications by the Town Administrator to weed out those which do not meet the minimum requirements. On December seventeenth, we would be provided names of those who do meet the requirements for the job. I've allowed the month of January twenty thirteen to interview candidates as well as do whatever background research we, we might feel necessary, depending upon the candidates. It might be a site visit, it might be additional material, et cetera. And looking with a target date of naming a successful candidate on February fourth, which I think would give us ample time to negotiate a contract and, um, have someone in place by March fourth for a transition period with the incumbent who's, uh, indicated that, um, seeking to retire by the end of March. So, um, that's, that's what's tossed out there. Let me open it up to, to both of you, and any thoughts you have, and, and what we want to do on the process? Let's, let's go to town.
Copy for you and Bill.
Okay.
I agree with the, uh, the comments and the suggestions that you've made, Mr. Chairman, and also, Bill. Uh, when I looked at this, and it's, uh, it's interesting. I've been fortunate to have been involved with three executive secretaries and now administrators. And every time we did it, we always did it, we added responsibilities, added duties, to make sure that we were addressing the needs at that time. And so when I looked at this, on page two, the, the comments that I would make for this changes, uh, the basic knowledge, it should, I think it should be changed, education, education is most important. We should also say a master's degree in business administration, accountancy, a public administration strongly preferred, and then a comparable degree may also be considered by the board. Uh, knowledge of applicable, applicable state federal laws and local bylaws is fine. And then I think the, uh, in order to take it to another level now, I think from what the President Administrator has done, I think going forward, I think knowledge of basic accounting procedures, which we have, and municipal budget formulation experience required, and the familiarity with municipal accounting principles preferred. So hopefully, as we go forward, of all the duties that we do, hopefully that this new person will become more involved, really involved, with the budgeting, the budget formulation, maybe being the, uh, person that the FinCom provides the information to initially and all that. But I think by doing this, I, I know we've talked about this in the, in the past, to have the person become more fiscally responsible as far as leading, directing, working with the FinCom, and I think with those changes, I think, um, you know, we should be okay. As we all know, you know, it's two thousand thirteen, while in a few months, I think any solid, serious person is gonna have the education. Experience is most important, so I think everything else touches it. But those are the comments, Brian and Bill, that I'd like to, you know, suggest.
Okay, great, thank you. Let me just, uh, so are these all going under a category of education, Dean?
Yes.
Uh, okay.
They can be arranged, whatever way we can put them in.
So, so, so the heading is gonna be education?
Instead of basic knowledge.
Okay. And then B and C would be listed within that heading of education?
Yes.
Okay.
Makes sense.
All righty, so again, just the, first of all, can I take a back, can I take a step back, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, sure, yeah.
Are we to assume that your recommendations for the timeline has been agreed upon?
No.
No?
No, we, we.
No, if they did, I was just gonna.
We're talking about the whole thing.
Okay, I was just, if they were, I'm giving this.
No, I just tossed that out to try to get things rolling.
So education, basic knowledge is supplanted by education as A, B, C?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, so it's gonna be changed a little bit, though, right?
Little bit, sure, yeah.
Not just gonna be A, it's gonna be revised?
Correct.
Right, okay, so it'll be revised to incorporate, uh.
Those thought too.
B and C?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, no, I think those are great, I think those are very good additions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Agree.
Anything else, Dean?
No, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Bill, and we can just go forward. Bill, any thoughts on the process, description, whatever?
Um, let me, let me take it in two bites. The, uh, the job description, I, I agree with Dino. It's important that we make appropriate edits, because a lot of this has been legacy for some nineteen years or so. So, um, you know, my thinking is, when I look at the duties and specifically responsibilities to supervision, and I, it looks like things can be tightened up just a bit. And it's just a practical matter of who approves, uh, who approves expenditures, who approves payroll, who approves vacation requests. Those types of things are happening on a daily basis, and they're happening with more than what's listed here. So my suggestion is that we modify the second paragraph.
So the description?
Under duties. Responsible for the supervision, the department heads under the board's jurisdiction. And, uh, end the sentence there. And I think that also would help eliminate the section, provide direct superv, uh, supervision to over thirty FTEs. I'm not sure who the thirty are, and if I could count them, I think that changes with attrition, ads, and a hundred FTEs within the police department. I don't think that, that paragraph is necessary. Because when we've said supervisory responsibilities to the people under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen, I think that's clear enough. And I, and I think updating the, is it, Louis, is this representative of the current organizational chart, the one we received today?
I'll be honest with you, Bill.
Well, we modify it. We, we should bring it up to date if it's not today, but, um.
I think it's pretty close. We haven't taken, we'll get it in some time.
All right, take another pass.
Oh, actually, you've got the departments right here on the.
Yeah, because a lot of this isn't measured, isn't, I'm sorry, isn't written here. And I just think it's a practical matter, it's a good idea to have people who need to take vacation or need to have their budget signed off, or reimbursements approved, that they, uh, they know who that is, and the new administrator knows who that is as well. This seems to exclude people, and I'm not sure.
All right, so, so you're looking on page one, the second paragraph, you're looking to eliminate the positions that, that, that were added under there?
Right, and what I would do is.
Under jurisdiction?
End the, uh, end the first sentence at the board's jurisdiction and, and add a period there, and provide administrative support to police and fire chiefs, because I think there's, I think there's a difference as it relates to police and fire with respect to strong chiefs that we can talk about with Jerry. But I think it is administrative support to the police and fire.
All right, so you're, you're, you're talking about just omitting the position, starting with town accountant and ending with the animal control officer?
Correct.
Okay, and why is that? Just because, what, it's not a complete list?
Because it's not complete, right?
Okay, all right. Would you want to put including but not limited to? And then have those positions in there? And I only indicate that so that if a prospective applicant is looking at it, he or she may get some sort of idea as to, you know, what types of positions we're talking about.
Well, I think what we ought to have is, at, at a minimum, these listed here from the, uh, from the current organizational chart.
Okay, so do you want to, well, that would be the other way to do it.
So that's the other way, either be all-inclusive to the ones we know of.
Okay.
Or be less inclusive and just say to the, to the departments that are directly reporting to the Selectmen.
All right, so do you want me to, do you want me just to add this list?
You know, I.
Or would?
I, I, I'm agnostic. Either add that list or remove the specifics that are not all-inclusive. Uh, my preference is to eliminate it, because it changes, we can modify it, but this is not inclusive today, and I don't want to put out something that's not accurate.
Actually, I think it's, I hate to say it, but I think you're right, because I think there were a couple missing here.
Yeah, there are.
Couple missing on, on, on the chart?
On the, yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, no, well, and, but, but, I know, but it's not indicated that it's exclusive.
No, no, no.
It just says including. It's just to give an idea. But is this, I mean, it, it, you know, this, this document here, Louis, this, this is intended to be published so that prospective applicants can look at it and say, well, geez, what's the guy gonna, the person gonna do?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Yes.
So it would be illustrative. So, so the question is, um, you know, do we impede applicants by, by removing those positions? Or, or you think it's simply good enough to just say under the board's jurisdiction? Because if I'm a, you know, applicant from Lemonster or something, you know, I look at it, well, geez, you know, what's the, what is the, what's under the?
What's the town made up? How many people are elected? How many people are appointed? How many people? They're not gonna know that from this anyway.
No, but it gives them a rough idea. Oh, okay, the accountant, the engineer, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, as long as we make it clear, so the clarity, I think, is important. So if someone applies, because there are a couple other positions.
I mean, you could put in your including but not limited to. So then you, you've given some illustrative positions. You're giving more information out.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure why we would do it if it wasn't at all-inclusive.
Well, just to give them some basic idea as to the positions that they, you know, would, would have some supervisory, um, duties with. I don't know, what, what do you think, Louis? Do you think that's?
I think to make it easy.
A prospective employee, uh.
I mean, I can go either way, but if you want to be clean, just.
Make it all-inclusive?
Make the list.
Yeah.
I'll add the list, I'm expanded.
I'm okay with that.
Make them all?
And that's the end of it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay? I'll add what's on the left.
All right.
All right.
All right, so add, add, include them all?
Yeah, and, and maybe it might benefit other people to understand exactly how extensive the position is and how many direct reports and supervisory responsibilities that person has.
Right, and it'll be in the second paragraph.
Okay.
Okay, so, so add that list, and, um, you might want to end it off with, uh, and, and other positions that may arise from time to time at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen, because I don't know, we might appoint a new, some position that, that might come under it.
Right, but at least that would be within the purview of that person being hired.
Yes.
Right? And they'd know about it by virtue of being here.
All right, good, so let's do that.
Um, with respect to, you had asked me about the timeline.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I thought you did a great job on the timeline. And I, I see exactly what you were hoping to do. Um, I agree with it. I wish we could move it up, and I just don't see it possible when you work backwards from the process, because it would have been my preference to have somebody with Louis longer, but I think it's an aggressive schedule as it is, so I don't have any desire to make it more aggressive.
Okay.
I think we want, it's more important that we do it right.
That might be more important for the person coming in, to be less time with Louis.
Right. Wow.
So low blow, that's uncharacteristic.
First, they could change their mind, say, hey, wait a minute.
Very uncharacteristic.
I hadn't thought about it from that perspective.
No, I think that, yeah, the more time, the better, but.
Well, I, I wanted to try to give us as much time from, from, you know, January, you know.
No, this lays it out well.
Okay. Um, all right, the other question is, I guess, where do we want to advertise?
So the timeline goes.
Yeah.
And the only reason I'm being a pest on this is I want to give you one, so we don't get, I took the liberty of having it typed, so.
Oh, okay.
In the event that they approved it, so you'd be operating at the same dates, and we don't get confused, right? More confused.
All right, no, that, that's fine. But, but, yeah, well, you're gonna have to make changes on the duties anyway.
Oh, certainly, yeah.
Okay. And, and then the question is, you know, where do we want to advertise?
Oh, no, no, before that, if you may.
Yeah?
If I may.
Yeah?
Do you want to, to finish salary? Is this the job description?
Oh, okay, do we want to add in a salary range?
Want to put a range in or anything?
That's why I had asked Louis to put together the area town's base salary. You know, again, real quick, in my email, I, I just kind of looked at the, the low-end number of North Attleboro, which actually is, is fairly similar to Milford in terms of population, as, as ninety thousand. And then just kind of took, took a, an outside number, a little bit beyond where we're at now, to a hundred twenty-five. But, you know, whatever, you know, that's, just, just to get the discussion started. Whatever. whatever, you know, whatever you want to do is fine.
No, I think your guideline was, was fine, Mr. Chairman, I think, in order to give the board flexibility, I think arrange an appropriate range. I know a lot of times in the Beacon, the salary is never mentioned, and I, I just don't see how you can do that, so I think we want to have a good job description, responsibility, education, experience, and then put down with the salary, uh, being flexible from a range, and I think that would be the best way to go.
Okay.
I'm also okay with that.
Okay, you're okay with those numbers? Okay, so
What are the numbers, Mr. Chairman?
Ninety thousand to one twenty-five annual. So, we can put that in as a salary range. Okay, uh, all right, so what else is there, Louis? Uh, we need to...
Okay, I think that, I think that takes care of the job description.
All right.
And we'll, we'll change that, uh... The application, you want to, you want to stay with the, uh, you want to stay with the, um...
All right, win.
The Beacon, the M...
Oh, the advertising? Okay, yeah, what, what do we want to do with advertising? The only other thing I think we could add is, you know, whether or not we want to advertise in the Boston Globe. I mean, we'll, we'll have a local paper, the Beacon, obviously, is the main resource for municipal individuals. Lou, did you get a chance to see how that advertisement works with, with access to their website? Can, can we get it on the website for a period longer than just the month of November?
Yes.
Okay, so that'll be there.
Yeah, and I don't have any issue with the, the Globe. I, I, that was one of the things I was gonna bring up tonight, whether we think we'd gain benefit, and I think we would, because it's read by an awful lot of people, not just in the, the Boston area, but certainly in the Metro West and, uh, New Hampshire, and local states.
I think it's a good idea.
So, the Beacon and the Boston Globe, right?
So, you just, you want the Beacon and the Globe, and nothing else?
Well, do we want to do a local paper as well? The Town Crya, Daily News?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
I don't think we lose anything by it, you know?
No.
And their rates are reasonable, so
Yeah.
It's not a high expense.
So, let's, let's do it, the Daily News?
Now, just, just, are, are we, are we in agreement when, when we, when we put something, for instance, in the Daily News? I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, or I don't think I am unless you tell me that's what you wish. What we'll put in is town administrator, contact board of selectmen's office, it'll be a little thing like that, because if we put a three or four page in
Yeah, I agree.
We're talking hundreds, five, six hundred dollars.
Right, no, no.
I don't mean to just single out the Daily News.
No, no, that's, I don't know.
Do you agree on that?
Yeah, and I would just point them to the website.
The full thing, the full thing will, the full job description will be in the Beacon and on their website. That's where you're gonna get your, your applicants.
And, and Louis, and anything less than that, that we advertise locally? I don't see any reason why we can't have a posting on the, on Board of Selectmen's website to have this information.
It'll be there, it'll obviously be on WMIC.
So, just have the, have the ad, point them to the, uh...
Right, have the ad Have the ad access for more information
Correct, right.
Yeah, so you can do a summary ad.
We agree on that, right?
A brief summary ad with just the high points for the newspapers, right?
Yeah.
And, uh
Yeah.
Access, pointing to the, to the website. So, I, um, I mean, I just picked out some dates, I don't know in terms of publication, but I just figured, y- y- you know, getting those ads out there as soon as you can, the Town Crya, you know, whatever ad date there is for the next issue. All right.
So, the Globe, the Beacon, the two local newspapers?
No, no, that'll be... Uh, di- is that what you wish?
Crya and Daily News?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, do them both, right?
We may need, we may need a transfer to our advertising, uh...
Well, you know, I mean
The radio station, of course.
It's okay, yeah.
But I think, and then the website, I think that's a good representation of advertisement, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it's significant.
You are giving me the leeway to make the dates in accordance with what?
The publication. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever makes sense for them.
The only one I can guarantee is we gotta have it in by Friday to the Beacon, so I know that'll be November first. I'll try to coordinate the other ones as close as I can.
Yeah, that one's key.
Right, right, right.
Sure, Louis.
Yeah, we just, we just picked two dates for the, for the publications. So, if those dates don't work, then whatever date
Okay.
Makes sense.
Already.
But you're right, the key is the nineteenth, and then everything plays off from, from there.
Sure.
All right, well, thank you, Lou, for putting this together, you did a great job, and, uh, thank you, Bill and Dino, for looking this over, and, um, this is gonna be a big job for us, and it's a very important one.
Do we agree with the, the application process, the number of copies, the letter of intent, and we agree with all that? I mean, you're proving that.
I thought that looked fine, let me just take a quick look at that. Nothing jumped out at me on that.
Obviously, I'm gonna have to change some of the dates there in light of the changes this evening, which I will go.
Yeah, five copies, uh, yeah, you want one for each, okay.
And where this job description has been modified, I'm not sure that it's worthwhile pointing to a nineteen eighty-seven, uh, survey. It's been edited.
I'm not following that.
First-line item, application process, enclosed in the package, the job description developed by?
Oldy.
Yeah, I don't think we need...
No, no, I, I, I put that together for you, so you know that.
All right, I didn't know, okay. Uh, can it see?
Yeah, so you have to change number two, instead of the basic knowledge, have education.
Right, yeah, I'll, I'll make the change.
Yeah, so I think you can tweak this to, to reflect the changes we've discussed tonight, but I think the sum and substance is, uh, oh, and then you've got the dates also, but yeah, but, yeah, no, I...
Yeah, no, this looks good.
I think it's fine.
All right, I'll make the changes.
You've got the letter of intent.
Yeah.
Resume, uh, and, uh, education coursework, so I think that's good.
All right, and if any, anything's changed, just let me know, and I'll, I'll make those changes.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. Dean, do you have any new business?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Bill?
All set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, under correspondence, we received another report from, uh, Mike Santora on the Main Street Improvement Project, as that work is progressing. We received from the police chief, the third quarter license establishment activity report. Uh, this is cumulative from January, but, uh, this particular report really is, is the third quarter, so you're talking July, August, September, and I didn't see anything that, that jumped out at me during those, during that time period that I thought was, was an issue. I don't know, Dean, do you have any comments?
No, I agree, just, there are, some of them had like four or five, but there were small things, I think, of being addressed by the police department, so
Yeah.
Somebody else's stuff was old, not to mention certain places, but, uh, but otherwise, I thought it was okay. It was rather benign.
Yeah, Bill?
No, I thought, uh, I appreciate the report, as always, I thought we, this board had gone over a number of those, as it's a rehash of the six-month period, but no issues or comments. I'm happy with the, the way the chief's pulling together the data and the way he's working with those businesses.
And we also received from the chief, um, an alcohol establishment compliance check indicating that, uh, two detectives, along with an underage operative, went to thirty-six establishments within the town of Milford on September twenty-first and conducted an alcohol compliance check, and, um, uh, one, one restaurant was closed at that time, and then the thirty-five other establishments all were found to be in compliance and passed. So, I think that's great news for, uh, the police department, and then also for the licensed establishments that we have in this town. Uh, we've got a report from the building commissioner on the neighborhood task force update, and, uh, still working with, um, multi-unit dwelling owners to deal with some violations, and talks about, uh, having appropriate contact information for, uh, three, um, three owners. So, again, that committee, uh, that group continues to do very good work addressing some, some very difficult problems in the town. Uh, we received a new correspondence from, um, the Milford Water Company indicating that, uh, their, uh, support the Milford Pond Restoration Committee and, and their work wholeheartedly, um, and has indicated that the water company, as part of its annual well field maintenance budget, will include up to five thousand dollars for the maintenance of vegetation control at Milford Pond once the project has been completed, so that's, uh, good news for ongoing maintenance for that, that upcoming project.
Mr. Chairman, can I just, going back to the neighborhood task force, I know Louis has always said that, this has to be, this has to continue to be a priority, has to be an ongoing situation, and I just, you know, John and the committee have done a wonderful job, but we just have to impress upon them that, uh, you know, minus the, the wintertime coming and all that, but as soon as the wintertime is over, whenever possible, then this has to be a priority, because there are many areas, uh, throughout town that doesn't really take long to, to go back to prior behavior, so we just want to make sure this is a continued priority of the, of the board and the town, and that, uh, you know, they've done a very dedicated and very, it's a tedious job, but we just have to make sure that, uh, we don't become lackadaisical in this regard, you know?
Yeah, no, and I don't think that that's happening at all, they're, they're, you know, getting to the root of it, um, you know, trying to get the remaining ten owners to respond, um, and, um, there were some discrepancies with mailing addresses, so yeah, it looks like they're, you know, doing the legwork to really try to track these, these people down.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a, I got a memo today from poor John who was all upset. There was a typo on, uh, page two, it's, there is not thirty-one three-family dwellings. There are a correct number, uh, hundred and sixty three-family dwellings, just for the record.
Hundred and sixty?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Just wanted to make that clear.
Okay, all right, great. Uh, Bill, did you want to address anything on?
No, you've covered everything.
Okay, uh, we have other informational correspondence, we have another sanitary survey from the Department of Environmental Protection, um, looking at the Milford Water Company, clarifying correspondence from the town of Mendon in terms of that prior correspondence, requesting assistance with the building inspection services, and Lou, you're working on that? Well, get us a response.
I don't know that we need a response. My foreign services representative from Mendon has informed me that they, they want to slow that down. They're not as interested right now in, uh, pursuing that, so right now, we'll put it on hold.
Okay, so is that what this letter is telling us? Our goal is not immediate, but rather to explore options once we begin to formulate our fiscal year fourteen budget, so is that how we interpret that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, well, good, thank you for, for that. We have the, uh, regular inspection report from the building department with the work that they've done. And then we also got an invite to, uh, Virilia North America regarding an award presentation at the Milford facility on October eighteenth at, uh, two P.M. And lastly, we received, uh, from town council in our package, the rate increase request from the, uh, water company, which at this point is, is obviously quite voluminous, um, and, and as both of you know and agree, we've worked with the finance committee to try to increase our request for, uh, funds at this town meeting to, um, hire, uh, not only the, the water company engineering specialist, but also a, a financial specialist to, to give town council the wherewithal to review this request fully and fight it every step of the way, as the number is extremely large and at this point appears unreasonable. So, with that, let me, uh, is there any other items you'd like to, uh, address, Dean?
No, see, I think you're absolutely right on that particular case, uh, a few times that it's happened in the past. As you said, we work with town council, he's the lead person, he intervenes, we do whatever has to be done. Um, no, and then the other report, a summary from Louis about the double poles, working with National Grid, and, uh, we also received a report from Chief Tui.
Bill, did you have any comment on anything there, or anything you want to bring up?
No, um, it's just the, the double pole, I'm just, uh, still concerned that even with National Grid's response of, what, thirty-some poles being removed, we're still at a rate of increase that, if I project out five years, we're gonna have six hundred double poles. So, the rate of increase is far and away exceeding what their removal rate is. Even at their best response, it's, uh, inadequate, and, um, I think we ought to respond as such.
Lou, what's the latest on that? Have you been working with them, or do we need to, do we need to have a meeting at, at our level? Do we need to invite these folks in and have a hot-to-hot like we've done in the past?
The last conversation I had with Barb Russell, I, I mean, I, you couldn't have impressed upon her more so than I did, the seriousness and the gravity that, uh, the board had with this situation, and, and Barb was almost, uh... Barb was hesitant when he was talking, he says, Lou, it's at the, it's at the level above me where they're holding it up. I'm waiting for the authorization from the thirty. We're up against it, and again, I, I told him that's, I, I felt badly for him personally. I said, but I'm hearing it on the other end, and, and there's gotta be some movement, they're gonna, they're gonna escalate it to another level, meeting the board.
Yeah, it's a token gesture, and I, and I appreciate everything you've done, Louis, to get to thirty, but
I, I, I understand.
The math's not working.
I will have another conversation with him, I'll be delighted to do that, and maybe
I think it's time.
We really don't have the time right now to be fooling around with them. We've got a couple busy agendas, we've got the tax classification coming up. Maybe we could save them for some time in December, maybe. But again, I, I'll talk to Barb Russell again, I mean, he's terrific to me, but he, he only can do what he's allowed to do, and, and it's, it's changed considerably from when Mike Peterson was there.
No, I know, and Mike, Mike had done a nice job kind of taking that over.
Yeah, but it's changed, and you hit the nail on the head, it's mostly economics.
Yeah.
Again, that doesn't help us, that's not right, but
And there's, and there lies my concern, because, and, and Louis, to my point that I tried to make the other night, and I probably didn't do a good job, some of these, some of these double poles are impacting line of sight. When people back out of driveways, when people come out of intersections, the double pole's creating a greater obstruction. Visibility is lacking, and the ability, so I don't know whether it takes a lawsuit, I don't want to be in the mode where we react like the airplane crash mentality, where we react after somebody dies or after somebody's seriously hurt. We may never find out what contribution these poles are making, but they're certainly an eyesore, without question. And the second thing is, I, no question, they're a safety concern in my mind, and where you put them on corners, and where you put them down the street, when you look to, look, try to see down the road. We're doing an awful lot in this town for traffic, trying to make it safer. Uh, we're doing an awful lot at intersections, but this isn't making it. I know, I know, I know I'm preaching to the choir, but
But we're wasting an awful lot of time.
If we don't have the time, and we're not gonna make it a priority, then, then it's unimportant.
I think we gotta take it another way, in my personal opinion, I mean, I can, I can yell and scream.
No, let's invite, let's invite your contact and his boss.
Again, I'll be happy to do that if that's
And, and if we, if we've got to look at new ways to, uh, you know, work with our representatives to create new legislation?
That's the other way we've got to attack this.
We've been successful at that in the past, too.
Right.
But this one's difficult, because the lobbying efforts, they, they
Lobbying, there are bills before
They'll, they'll spend money on, uh...
The money that's being spent to beat back these bills, it's incredible.
If they use that money to put on the field.
To fix the poles, we'd probably be better off.
I know. Well, why don't you, why don't you do this, though, why don't you, you know, have another conversation, and then we can touch base and, uh, see when we can fit into our agenda to have them, and, and it's not just, uh, National Grid.
Well, they own the poles.
They own the poles.
But we ought to have Comcast and Verizon, too.
If they're gonna rent, my issue is whether the, you know, the people that are, I, I'm looking to the owner of the pole. If they're gonna lease space, use space, it's their job to manage their, who they lease to.
You know, see, well, last year, we had a very successful meeting, during the afternoon, many, many people attended on the stormwater thing, maybe we can do something with that, instead of coming, uh, waiting to a meeting on Monday night.
Right, it could, absolutely, it could, and, or it could be, you know, a, a day meeting also, to see where they're at.
And the corporate people could come, or, whatever.
Well, why don't you talk to them, uh, you know, the only sense I have is that, you know, if we have Verizon and Comcast in, they might be more sensitive to public opinion also.
About you.
And certainly can, um, you know, exert some, some pressure. But, uh, why, why, why don't you, you know, have another conversation, then we'll touch base, and, uh...
I'll, I'll have a conversation with them and allude to the, well, I won't allude to anything else, they clearly that, uh, coming up, we're gonna, we're gonna be scheduling a meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
And if you do, they have.
Yeah, and then we'll talk about how it fits into our schedule.
Right.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay, uh, that's it, we do have an executive session this evening to talk about a contract